You know what, let's make it happen. Good evening, everyone. The Tuscaloosa City Council is now coming to order. We ask that everyone please stand for our council prayer and then remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. Bow our heads, please. Dear God, bless our proceedings tonight. Give us the wisdom to know what is just and the strength to do what is right. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Approval of the minutes?
Make a motion.
Move in second that we approve the minutes. Voting, Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
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 Minutes stand approved. Proclamation statements by council members tonight. Counselor Crowe is going to make the proclamation recognizing North Ridge High School Track and Field Team. I guess it'd help if I put on my glasses. And so, Mr. Crowe, if you would read the proclamation, and I'd ask Coach Sparks and his team to come up forward to the podium as Mr. Crowe reads the proclamation into the record. Whereas the North Ridge High School Jaguars Track and Field Team has brought great pride and honor to our city by capturing the 2025 AHSA A Class 6A State Track and Field Championship, showcasing exceptional athleticism and competitive excellence. And whereas, under the outstanding leadership of head coach Jeff Sparks and his dedicated coaching staff, the Jaguars demonstrated remarkable skill, determination, and teamwork throughout the season, excelling in sprints, distant events, jumps, and relays alike, and representing North Ridge High School and the city of Tuscaloosa with distinction. And whereas the Jaguars championship performance, highlighted by standout efforts from student athletes across all events, reflects a longstanding tradition of discipline, perseverance, and sportsmanship that defines North Ridge athletics and inspires continued success within our community. And whereas this historic achievement symbolizes the culmination of countless hours of training and dedication, serving as a powerful example to young athletes across Tuscaloosa of what can be accomplished through commitment and teamwork. And the success of the North Ridge Jaguars embodies the core values of hard work, unity, and pride in community that strengthen the spirit of our whole city. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Walt Maddox, on behalf of the City Council of Tuscaloosa, do hereby extend heartfelt congratulations and deep admiration to the North Ridge High School Track and Field Team for their outstanding achievement as 2025 AHSA A Class 6A state champions. We encourage all of our citizens to join in recognizing and celebrating the accomplishments of every athlete, coach, and supporter who contributed to this extraordinary championship season. Congratulations. Now, now I'd like to turn it over to Coach Sparks, who's going to introduce the team and important members of this of this organization. Thank you, Chief.
Council members, thank you so much for recognizing us. We appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. We appreciate it. Our young ladies and gentlemen have worked really hard. Our school system, as you know, supports us very well. Just want to read some of the names off of the athletes. We apologize, but some of our kids are they're off of college competing now or off of college. So I'll read the the members of the team. Jennings Heinz, Cedric Tinker, Hayden Wiley, Davis Sparks, Anglin Young, Justin Wilkins, Griffin Sparks, William Numnum, Kealan Little, Kayon Lewis, Tyler McNeil, William McLean, PJ Harris, Jalen Wells, Sam Guy, Peanut Cabell, Bejan Sandford, Sean Stevenson, Eliza Schimmel, Preston Barnes, the coaching staff, myself, Mitchell Greenhall, Chris Cooper, Coach Tim Thomas, David Harrod. Those are our staffs. Thank you so much. We appreciate y'all recognizing us. Thank you.
I know, I know we're about to, I know we're about to take a quick picture, but I've seen Ms. Buck out here tonight. I think you had a a close family member that was on that team?
Her, her son is, you know, is just the is the first decathlete to go back-to-back decathlon champions. I know that Mr. Busby will like this. There's only been five in the state of Alabama, and one of those others is Bo Jackson. William, her son, is the first one in 20 years to go back-to-back decathlon champion. He's at Ole Miss competing.
All right, guys, look right this way. One, two, three. Perfect.
Thank you.
It's a folder. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe, for making that happen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank y'all, Council.
And I would encourage any other council members, if there are championship teams or recognitions for your district, please let Ms. Johnson or Ms. Gillian or Ms. Cooper know. And we want to make certain to recognize them so they know that the city supports them. Do have a few announcements for the upcoming holiday. City Hall and the Gateway will be closed on November 27th and 28th in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. There'll be no city council or committee meetings on Tuesday, November 25th and December 2nd due to the Thanksgiving holiday closings. The regularly scheduled meeting will resume on Tuesday, December 9th. Garbage, trash, and recycling will not be collected on Thursday, November 27th. Thursday routes will be collected on Friday, November 28th. No other routes are impacted. For additional information, please contact Tuscaloosa 311. Do we have any council announcements tonight?
Yes, Mayor. I would like to remind the community that on this Friday, November 21st, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM, we will be hosting, myself, Counselor Eaton, Counselor Lanier, and Senator Bobby Singleton, Representative England, and A.J. McCambe, and Representative Curtis Travis, along with our Board of Education member Karen Thompson Jackson. We will be hosting the Fourth Annual Community Thanksgiving Dinner at the McDonough Hughes Center. The doors open at 5:30. We plan to feed well over 2,000 individuals, and I would like to invite the council members to come out and be a part. So that's this Friday at 5:30.
That's such a great thing that all of you collectively do. Thank you for what y'all do.
Not near as exciting at that, but yes, Mayor, I'll be at Jack's the next couple sat.
All right. Any other council announcements? Any agenda item comments by citizens?
No, sir.
Unfinished business, clerk?
This will order demolition of the structure at 3209 Seventh Street.
Second.
Moving second, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, this is for 3209 Seventh Street, condemned December 8th, 2023. This property has 46 housing code violations. The owner has been contacted, is aware of this hearing. The owner is aware that if it's condemned by the City Council, the cost of demolition will be charged back to the owner. The owner has continued to make progress on his repairs. He's got more roofing done, painting, and continued on the exterior surfaces. The owner is here to represent.
Any questions to Mr. Williams? Okay, if the owner could come forward, please give your name and address.
My name is Gaffrey Bugs. I'm the owner of 3209 Seventh Street. I have 90% of the roof done now, 90% of the painting done now. I have more done than just what the pictures show. And I would like to have 90 more days. I promise I can finish it.
Mr. Buzz, I just want to say first, thank you, because I do walk by all the time and I see you working. And that's what we're all about, about giving you an opportunity to to improve your home. You're doing just that. I would like to make a recommendation, make a motion to table for 90 days.
Second.
Second.
Hey, it's been moved in second to table for 90 days. This was a public hearing when it was introduced. Anyone here wish to speak for or against? Seeing none, voting table for 90 days. Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
Yes.
It looks very good.
Thank y'all very much.
Yes.
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 Thank y'all very much.
Keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Good work. Clerk?
This will order demolition of the structure at 2646 25th Street.
Motion. Second. Moving second, Mr. Williams.
This is for the condemnation of 2646 25th Street, condemned June 13th, 2025. This property has 47 housing code violations. The owner has been contacted, is aware of this hearing. The owner is also aware that if it's condemned and demolished, the cost of demolition will be charged back to the owner. This condemnation is for the main structure and all accessory structures. The owner has repaired a broken window and tore down the dilapidated accessory building since the last hearing, citing repairs still have not been corrected. The owner is here to represent.
Any questions for Mr. Williams?
Yes. So since the last hearing, how much time did we give this petitioner?
The last time, they had 90 days.
They had 90 days?
Yes, ma'am.
So this is the review after the 90 days?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. If the owner would come forward, if you would, please give your name and address.
Donna Thomas, 2646 25th Street.
Carmen Thomas, 3325 23rd Street.
Any questions for the owners?
So you had 90 days to make some progress for us to see. Tell us about your your current progress.
Well, I'm a single parent, and I make $13 an hour. I do the best I can with what I have. You know, I'm on top of bills and taking care of eight kids. Again, I do the best I can with what I have. I mean, it's a slow process, but it's moving slowly but surely.
Oh, do you think you can make more progress in 30 days?
I don't know about 30 days. I mean, it is the holidays. I mean, I got a lot going on.
What would be realistic for you?
90 more days.
I don't know about 90, because this one particular property I have had lots of complaints about in the past. And so...
Well, in the past, wasn't nobody in the house.
Mm-hmm.
But we are currently in the house.
Okay.
We're trying to get work done as we can. There's a siding that needs to be fixed now, so we're trying to work on getting that fixed.
Yeah, that's my sister. You know, she helping me as much as she can, and she have her house and bills of her own.
Right.
Okay. So I do want to take in account that this is the holidays. I want us to be reasonable. Well, let's keep it at 30 days and or what do y'all think? And just come back in 30 days and let's see what you have going on in 30 days? Or do y'all want to do 60?
Do 60.
Okay. What about 60 days?
60.
Okay. Just want to see some more progress take place. Okay.
Ms. Howard, was that 60 days?
60 days. I make a motion for 60.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second to table for 60 days. This was a public hearing when it was introduced. Anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, voting to table for 60 days. Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Demolition's table for 60 days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clerk?
This will order demolition of the structure at 2531 26th Street.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, Mr. Williams.
This is for the condemnation of 2531 26th Street, condemned June 13th, 2025. This property has 48 housing code violations. The owner has been contacted, is aware of the hearing. The owner is aware that if it's condemned and demolished, the cost of demolition will be charged back to the owner. The owner has made some repairs and got the house boarded up. The owner is here to represent.
Okay, if the owner would come forward and please give your name and address.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carolyn Craig Sterling Scott, and I am the owner of this property. And I have made some progress on it, and my intention is to go back and do some inside work as well. I'm trying to just do what I can to make it better for the neighborhood and better for someone to live in.
Are the windows still boarded up?
Yes.
Okay. So with 30 more days, be suitable for you to make some more progress? This is another property I would like to see more progress made towards.
Well, I have some glass inside of the house now to put in.
Okay.
And the contractor has not gotten back over there to do it. And in the meantime, someone had kicked the door down. And our problem was, was worried about if someone had gotten the glass out, but they didn't.
Okay. Well, broken windows and boarded up windows is not the ideal aesthetic that I like to see, you know, when I'm driving or walking through my community. So I do want to give you 30 more days, and then hopefully we can see what progress has been made in 30 days.
That's fine.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so it's a motion to table for 30 days?
Yes.
Any second?
Motion.
Second.
Moving second, table for 30 days. This was a public hearing when it was introduced. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, voting to table for 30 days, Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
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 The demolition's table for 30 days.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Clerk?
This annex is approximately one acre, located at 4216 4230 4040 Nickel Park Road.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Voting, Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Annexation is adopted. Consent agenda, clerk?
This approves items A through P on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Been moved in second, voting, Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
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 Consent agenda is adopted. Public hearings, clerk?
This approves an application for a permit to construct piers for commercial use.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions for any of our team members? Okay. Anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, voting, Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Permit is approved, clerk?
This consents to the vacation of a public alley.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any questions of team members? Anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, voting, Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
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 Vacation is approved. Resolution ordinance is not of a general nature or permanent operation, clerk?
This approves less than seven days special events retail licenses for Downtown Social LLC.
Motion. Second. It's been moved in second.
Evening, Mayor, Council. First up, I have Downtown Social LLC, ABC Application 25-064. They are applying for a special events retail less than seven days. They would like to have K.A. Alumni and Parent Game Day Tailgate at 416 University Boulevard and Phi Gamma Delta Alumni and Parent Game Day Tailgate at 976 University Boulevard. All my reports have been filed with the city clerk. TPD will come and give their report, and then the applicant with questions.
Officer Champion?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Police Department doesn't have any objection to this applicant.
Thank you. Is there anyone here representing Downtown Social? If you would, please come forward and give your name and address.
Bill Wright, 6A Dunbrook, representing Downtown Social.
Any questions for Mr. Wright? All right. Sounds good.
Yes.
Voting, Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Applications are approved, clerk?
This approves less than seven days special events retail licenses for Party Down LLC.
Motion.
Second.
Moving second, Ms. Franks?
Okay, ABC Application 25-062 for Party Down LLC, applying for a special events retail less than seven days. They would like to have two events for SMP Automotive Christmas Party at 920 Paul W. Bryant Drive and also DKE Alumni Playoff Tailgate at 946 University Boulevard. All my reports should file with the city clerk. TPD will come and give their report, and then the applicant.
Okay, Officer Champion?
Police Department doesn't have any objections to this application either.
The applicant here? Do we have the applicant for Party Down LLC? Yes, if you would, please come forward and give your name and address.
Uh, Party Down LLC, I'm Jonathan Boyd. Uh, the address is 3108 25th Avenue, Suite B.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Voting, Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
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 Applications are approved, clerk?
This approves less than seven days special events retail licenses for Southern Food Service Management Incorporated.
Okay, ABC Application 25-063 for Southern Food Service Management Incorporated, applying for a special events retail less than seven days for CFP Game Day Events at 920 Paul W. Bryant Drive. All my reports have been filed with the city clerk. TPD will come and give their report, and then the applicant.
Will we hear from Officer Champion?
Second.
Moving second, Officer Champion? It's okay. Officer Champion?
No objection on this application either, sir.
All right. Yeah, do we have the applicant here? If you would, please come forward and give your name and address.
David Garrett, 431 Office Park Drive.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Voting, Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Applications are approved, clerk?
This approves less than seven days special events retail licenses for Downtown Entertainment LLC.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second, Ms. Franks?
Okay, last I have, Application 25-065 for Downtown Entertainment LLC, applying for special events retail less than seven days. They would like to have six events at fraternity houses. You have ATO, SAE, EN, Kappa Sigma, Sig Eup, and Phi Psi. All my reports have been filed with the city clerk. TPD will come and give their report, and then the applicant.
Officer Champion?
No objections to this applicant.
Is the applicant here? If you would, please give your name and address, although we could recite it for you as well.
This looked a lot better back, you know, Saturday morning, too, before these dates were given. It's Brandon Hanks, Downtown Entertainment, 504 Almond Avenue, Tuscaloosa.
Coach DeBoer is playing. He's playing chess, and everyone else is playing chess.
No doubt about that.
Get that on football. Any questions, Ms. Franks? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Voting, Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
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 Applications are approved, clerk?
This supports particular local legislation requested in the 2026 session of the Alabama Legislature.
Motion.
Second.
Moving second, voting, Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This authorizes a settlement agreement with the state of Alabama, ADM, and other parties.
So moved.
Second. Been moved in second, voting, Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This authorizes the appropriation of certain opioid settlement funds to Tuscaloosa County District Attorney's Office.
Motion.
Second.
Moving second, voting, Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This tentatively awards a public works contract to Civil Works Construction LLC.
Motion.
Second.
Moving second, voting, Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This tentatively awards a public works contract to Inliner Solutions LLC.
Motion.
Second.
Moving second, voting, Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This tentatively awards a public works contract to Dominion Construction Company Incorporated.
So moved.
Second. Moving second, voting, Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This will authorize a professional services contract with Mimecast North America Incorporated.
Motion.
Second.
Moving second, voting, Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This will authorize a contract with Vector Solutions.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, voting, Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This will authorize Amendment Number Four to the Joint Funding Agreement with the Tuscaloosa County Road Improvements Commission.
So moved.
Second. Moving second, voting, Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This will authorize the renewal of the city's insurance coverage for holidays on the Plaza.
Motion.
Second.
Moving second, voting, Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This authorizes acceptance of a donation from the Community Foundation of West Alabama.
Motion. Second. Been moved in second, voting, Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This authorizes submission of a grant application for the Tennis Venue Center.
So moved.
Second. Moving second, voting, Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This authorizes submission of a grant application for the Creative Places Arts Facilities.
So moved.
Second. Moving second, voting, Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This authorizes submission of a grant application to vested interest in Canines Incorporated.
Motion.
Second.
Moving second, voting, Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This authorizes Amendment Number Four to the Fiscal Year 2026 General Fund Reserve for Future Improvements Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, voting, Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This authorizes Amendment Number Five to the Fiscal Year 2026 General Fund Reserve for Future Improvements Fund Budget.
Motion. Second. Moving second, voting, Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted, clerk?
This authorizes a supplemental funding agreement with Tuscaloosa City Board of Education.
Motion.
Second.
Moving second, voting, Mr. Lanier?
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted. Ordinance of resolutions of a general nature or permanent operation for introduction, clerk?
This amends Section 211 of the Code of Tuscaloosa.
So moved.
Second. Moving second, voting, Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
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 Do I hear a call for unanimous consent?
Call for unanimous consent.
Moved in second, voting, Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Code is amended, clerk.
This amends sections nineteen sixty-one D and nineteen two oh five of the Code of Tuscaloosa.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, voting, Mr. Edman.
Yes.
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 Do I hear a call for unanimous consent?
Consent.
Second.
Moved in second, voting, Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Code is amended, clerk.
This annex is approximately point thirty-one acres located at fourteen three ten Santorini Street.
Motion.
Second.
Moved in second, voting, Mr. Edman.
Yes.
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 Call for unanimous consent.
Second.
Moved in second, voting, Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Annexation is adopted, clerk.
This authorizes amendment number two to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six Elevate Tuscaloosa Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, voting, Mr. Edman.
Yes.
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 Do I hear a call for unanimous consent?
Second.
Moved in second. He can't make a motion.
Motion. Let's go, guys. They working me, man.
Voting, Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
Yes.
You're doing so well.
Nah, man, I'm trying to pass the ball.
Thank you for keeping track.
It's not easy being left tackle over there.
Giving it away.
Yep.
You gotta guard the quarterback's blind side, man.
Yeah, man, I ain't with it.
All right, clerk.
This authorizes amendment number four to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six General Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, voting, Mr. Edman.
Yes.
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 Call for unanimous consent.
Second.
Moved in second, voting, Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
I guess.
Yes.
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 Amendment is adopted, voting down.
This authorizes the payment of bills.
Thank you, Bill.
Moved in second, and voting, Mr. Edman.
Yes.
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 Bills are paid. Citizens' comments or other communications, any citizens wish to address their city council tonight? Yes, please.
We're now on the agenda.
That's fine. Good evening. If you would, please come forward and give your name and address.
At this time, we want to, uh, share with you as members of Alpha, Kappa, Alpha Sorority.
Would you, would you, I'm, I'm sorry, would you mind speaking in microphones so people can?
To them, okay.
You're...
Uh, good evening, fellow council members. My name is Alcinha Morrow Tate, and I'm the Tuscaloosa Chapter President of the Ates Omega Chapter of Alpha, Kappa, Alpha Sorority Incorporated. And with me tonight is one of our co-chairs, uh, Ms. Joe Seta Green, who is co-chairing our YLI program. This program trains our young people to be leaders. There's quite a few more of them, but they got mixed up on the location. So they were thinking you started at six, but I think you changed the time.
Right.
But this young man here wants to see leadership in action, and what better example than our Tuscaloosa City Councilman?
Yeah.
Uh, his, tell him a little bit about yourself.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jared White, and I am a senior at the Central High School. I have had the wonderful opportunity of being a youth leadership initiative member, as well as a Alpha Chapter Boys Club member. And I just want to thank you all for all that you do within the city of Tuscaloosa, and it is very eye-opening to me to see your leadership in action. So from the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, to all of you, thank you so very much.
And our vice president for the Tuscaloosa Chapter.
Yes, good afternoon. I am Jacqueline Pryor, and I serve as the Vice President of Ates Omega Chapter here in Tuscaloosa. And it's a privilege to be here with you all. Of course, we have been here with you before, but it's been a while, and it's, as the young man stated, it's just good to see you all in action. We appreciate everything that you do, especially Mayor. Thank you so much for your leadership and all you've done for the Tuscaloosa area. We are on the map, and we thank you for that.
Thank you, Pryor.
The only question he had here now is that he get a picture with you and the councilman. So can we get a picture?
Yes, ma'am. I tell you what we can do. Following the, uh, citizens' comments, if the council can just remain for one minute, we'll get a quick, uh, quick picture.
Thank you.
We can do that. Is there anyone else that wishes to address their city council tonight? Okay, well, it's first come, first served, so please come forward. If you would, give your name and address.
Good evening, City Council. My name's Annalise Skirpin, and I live at six oh one Bryce Lawn Drive. I'm here today to request your support for Tuscaloosa residents needing energy assistance. I'm a social work student at the University of Alabama, graduating in December. As you regular Howard know, the social work program at UA culminates in an internship, and I was placed with community service programs at West Alabama. I know some of y'all have, um, y'all provided some funding to CSP before, but if you are not aware of the agency or need a little refresher, um, our mission statement is to empower low-income and vulnerable populations by providing resources and services that resolve immediate needs and lead to long-term self-sufficiency. The agency is made up of three departments, housing, education, and supportive services. I'm an intern with the Supportive Services Department, and we provide utility, food, and some rent assistance. We have multiple programs that we administer in order to help clients, and one of the major programs is the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, known as LIHEEP. While it's my understanding that the Continuing Appropriations Act of twenty-twenty-six, which opened the federal government, um, extends funding for LIHEEP through January thirtieth at fiscal year twenty-twenty-five levels, there is likely to be a delay in agencies receiving these funds since the process of determining award amounts for each state typically takes multiple weeks with a fully-staffed federal office. However, according to an article published on NPR, the entire federal LIHEEP staff was laid off earlier this year in April. And the article cites Mark Wolf, the Executive Director of the National Energy Assistance Directors Association, who states that agencies likely won't see any LIHEEP funds until late December or January. This is a dangerous reality for Tuscaloosa families. Although utility companies are not allowed to disconnect household services when temperatures are lower than thirty-two degrees for that calendar day, according to the general rules of the Alabama Public Service Commission two thousand and five, this does not protect households cut off prior to a temperature dip. Even if the temperatures do not go below freezing, thirty-five, forty, and even forty-five degrees is still too cold to be living in a house without heat. From October twenty-twenty-three to October twenty-twenty-five, we assisted households in West Alabama twenty-one thousand five hundred twenty times. Every day, we receive regular calls and walk-ins of people seeking assistance that we have to turn away because our functioning was little to no funding. So with limited protections for Tuscaloosa residents against the upcoming cold temperatures, there are thousands of households at risk. Therefore, as we are entering winter months, I'm requesting the city council's support for Tuscaloosa residents while we wait for the LIHEEP grant. I would love to connect with any of you after the meeting to discuss this possibility. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just to briefly let you know, last week, Mr. Howell and I met with the new CSP director, I believe, Dr. Lewis.
Yes.
And we have been coordinating, the city's been coordinating since the, really for the last sixty days, before the shutdown and then after, with our agencies, including CSP, to make certain none of these safety nets are out there for the most vulnerable in our community, anyone falls through. So, um, although our actions hadn't been as public as others, little Perry Howell and his team have been coordinating to really help those groups and continue to do so to try to mitigate the things, the very things that you care about passionately, and we appreciate you coming up here and discussing this.
That's great to hear. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address their city council tonight? Yes, ma'am. If you would, please come forward and give your name and address.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Keyshawn Calvin. My address is eighty-two thirty Baptist Campground Road. Uh, um, first, I would like to say good evening. I want to thank the mayor and the council for your leadership and for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. I recognize the work that you all are doing to improve our city, including recent efforts in community engagement and crime reduction. I appreciate the positive changes that we've seen. However, there is still serious room for improvement, particularly within the police department. Over the past several months, I have personally witnessed actions by certain officers that raise concerns about fairness, accountability, and respect for civil rights. I'm not here to attack all officers. I know many officers serve with integrity and professionalism,